Good morning and welcome to the regular meeting of City Council for Tuesday, April 4th, 2023. Good morning. Do I need to waive the rules? Yeah, can I have a motion to waive the rules of council?
So moved.
Start later. Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Rules are waived. Thank you. And I apologize for being so late. I have a meeting announcement. All meetings are live streamed on the City Channel Pittsburgh YouTube channel. Will the clerk please take the rule call?
Reverend Burgess. Mr. Coghill.
Here.
Ms. Gross.
Here.
Mr. Kraus.
Here.
Mr. Lavelle. Mrs. Strasburger.
Here.
Ms. Warwick.
Here.
Mr. Wilson. Mrs. Kelsmith, President.
Here.
Six members present.
Thank you. Our next order, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing for a moment of silence. In our moment of silence, please keep our three Pittsburgh police officers, thank you, Councilwoman Strasburger for the reminder, who passed away on this day, I think it was 14 years ago. So, thank you.
The pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you. And our next order of business is to amend the agenda. Is there a motion to amend the agenda?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Agenda's amended. Thank you. And our next order of business is proclamations, and I have one to be presented for Watchful Shepherd. Would the folks for Watchful Shepherd, please come forward? Okay. Okay. And every year, I try to make sure we do proclamations for Child Abuse Prevention Month, for Domestic Violence Month, and just to draw attention to some of the good work some organizations are doing across the city. And you can come up here if you'd like. And when we found this, we just thought it was amazing, amazing work that you're doing. Pronounce that name so I don't mispronounce it.
Femianni.
Femianni, okay. Okay. Whereas, the Watchful Shepherd USA is celebrating 30 years of protecting children since the program was first initiated at Kennesburg General Hospital in 1993. And whereas, Watchful Shepherd was founded by the late Joe Femianni, who was distraught by a tragic news story about a young girl who died at the hands of her father. Using similar technology found in Lifeline for homebound senior citizens, Femianni conceived a wristband allowing abused and neglected children to summon local emergency response at the press of a button. And whereas, what began as a pilot program in Washington County, PA, has grown into a national nonprofit family abuse prevention program, which has been used free of charge by numerous agencies across the country, and has protected thousands of children between the ages of 3 and 18. And whereas, the Watchful Shepherd USA also provides more discreet devices that can connect to an app on a mobile device capable of sending a text message up to five pre-selected emergency contacts. And whereas, on October 20th, 2023, the Watchful Shepherd USA is holding a unique fundraiser event, fundraising event, similar to Dancing With The Stars called Dancing For A Cause. The event will be held at the Hilton Garden Inn South Point and features celebrities teaming up with professional dance instructors from Arthur Murray Dance Studio. Most importantly, this worthwhile event helps to raise funds to fight child abuse. And now therefore be it resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby commend the Watchful Shepherd USA for providing such a unique and useful system of watching over our most valuable possessions, our children. And be it further resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby declare Tuesday, April 4th, 2023 to be Watchful Shepherd USA Day in the City of Pittsburgh. Have a motion to approve in a second.
So moved.
I can.
All in favor?
Aye.
Proclamations approved. Thank you. Thank you so much. Can you literally say a few words and tell people how they can buy tickets to your event or how they can support you in some way?
Absolutely. Absolutely. I will do that. On behalf of the Watchful Shepherd Board, our President Claudine Femianni and our Program Manager Jennifer Piero and myself, Tracy Walnoa, we would like to express our sincere gratitude for this proclamation during this, our 30th anniversary year. Our founder, Joseph Femianni, started with a dream to help one child, a child who, like so many others, needed a helping hand to navigate their world. Watchful Shepherd, over these last 30 years, has had the privilege to work with so many agencies across the city, county, state, and even the continental U.S. to be that hand for children and families. The month of April, this month, for child abuse prevention marks another milestone, an anniversary for Watchful Shepherd. We had been known for so many years, for almost 29 years, for a device that keeps children safe in their homes. But this time last year, Watchful Shepherd launched a mobile security device that, while paired with a cellphone, can travel with them wherever they go. This discreet device with a click of a button can alert personal contacts and/or ADT, a security alarm call center, and even if needed, record through a paired cellphone that would allow for safety for that child and their families. This new technology has opened up the possibilities to continue helping children, their caregivers, and keeping families together. We've done this with private donations and fundraisers such as Dancing For A Cause over these so many years to provide this service free of charge to our clients and to any of the agencies that utilize the Watchful Shepherd program. With that said, President Kelsmith, I thank you and this council for this proclamation. I was thrilled to hear that we have a day in Pittsburgh all to our own. And I'll leave you with just one example of one of our clients that stands out in my mind, and I hope it will yours as well. It's a story about Jessica who had our in-home devices, and they had asked, could she use one of the mobile devices? And when she was setting it up in the Children and Youth Office, Jen and I had gone to help with that pairing, she turned to her son and she said, "Do you know what this means now?" And we looked at each other and thought, "I wonder what that means." And she said to him, "We can go outside now." They had been homebound, and these mobile devices would now allow them to go outside and move about freely. And her son turned to her and said, "Maybe I could go to school. Maybe I could play football." And we thought to ourselves, and I thought to myself, if this is this one child that I help, Joe had said that so many years ago, if he could just help that one child, well, he's helped thousands over these past 30 years. I hope to help many more as well as I continue the work of Watchful Shepherd, but if it's just that one kid, I feel satisfied and I can go home. So, thank you. Thank you very much for this proclamation. And you can get tickets to our event there on sale on our website, wwwwatchfulshepherd.org.
Thank you. No, thank you. Stay here, we're gonna take some photos. But I just want to say, if you're a parent that needs help, there's a lot of help available out there. You can call 211, you can obviously call 911 if you feel comfortable, you can call 211 for a lot of resources. But if for some reason you're having a difficult time connecting to services, you can also always call our council offices and we'll try to connect you to the services that are available. Nobody should have to live, and you wonder what's wrong with something, everybody's always saying stuff, but what's wrong with the kids? When you're living in abuse or you're being put in foster care and you're abused in home after home, you don't have to wonder, we have to get help. And so, with that said, I just want to say, you know, we're always available. Please, you know, we can help in any way. Call, contact our office, contact you, contact 211, and as always, you know, we're here to help. So, with that said, will all members come forward for the photo? And thank you so much for your work.
Thank you.
Thank you. We actually have a coming up, a post-agenda on CYF. No, get up here.
Thank you so much. Thank you. Thank you.
I'll get behind you, I want you guys up there, okay?
Thank you so much. Here, you should come down and we'll go up. I can hold a proclamation.
You know what this means, yeah, you can do it, anyone in this city.
Do you want to come up? Bob Schwartzweller, want to come up?
Oh, that's okay.
You probably work with him.
Wake up, Bob.
All right. And here we go. One more.
The pinwheels, we can put them in the planters outside, is that okay? And there's some for all of you too. Absolutely.
So tell people the pinwheels, more.
Absolutely. The pinwheels are a symbol for Child Abuse Prevention Month. They started passing out pinwheels many years ago, and so it's basically a sign and a reminder that when the wind blows, as a reminder to help prevent child abuse. And so, we've been giving them out probably the last five or six years. And this month of April, we take them wherever we go, and there's one for everyone here. And we'd like to put them in the planters outside, if that's okay.
I'm sure it's fine.
Okay. It's Watchful Shepherd Day. I can do whatever I want.
I have no authority to say so, but I'm sure the mayor would appreciate it.
And if they're taken out, then our website is on there, and it's, you know, that's information that would be given for anyone who needs it.
Okay. And we'll just make sure that the mayor and DPW know that that's your stuff. Thank you. But that said, we have, no proclamations to be read? None? Okay. And then we'll move on to our next order of business, which is public comment. And I would like to remind everyone that the rules of council state that comments are limited to matters of concern, official action, or deliberation which are or may be before City Council. Profanity and threats will not be permitted. When you are called to speak, please state your name and neighborhood for the record. You will have three minutes to speak. And our first registered speaker is Naomi Mullen. Naomi?
Here.
Good morning.
My honorable husband, Michael Mullen, was a true public servant from the 1970s until 2021. Shady trees, not shady deals in Bon Air. This is for you, Michael. We, the people of Bon Air, are the real stakeholders. We have paid our mortgages, taxes, and voted. We have shown up at the town hall meeting to give a resounding no to developing the building. We have signed a petition to say we want a green space, not a building. We have property value and quality of life to protect. Here's the situation. An excellent school was closed. Two, the building has become a threat and detrimental harm. Three, it should be condemned and sold to the city for a dollar. Four, it must be torn down. Five, parks and trees Pittsburgh funds use to make it a green space. Six, the residents of Bon Air care for it as volunteers. Why are we paying taxes for continued detriment? Why should we pay taxes for a detriment? We do not consent to a detrimental building remaining to decay the community we have built and maintained. Former Mayor Seduto was defeated and left in disgrace. He appointed a panel that claimed the Bon Air Elementary School building should remain. We, the people of Bon Air, have driven past former school buildings and heard the stories of human feces in hallways and criminal acts around those buildings. We, the people, say no to any use of the schools except as a green space. According to the Pennsylvania Constitution, the purpose of government is for the peace, safety, and happiness of the people they serve. The Bon Air Memorial Green Space is the solution for the peace, safety, and happiness of the Bon Air community. And as we have seen in school shootings, it's not necessarily safe at schools, is it? Without having the peace, safety, and happiness, there is no value of government. Michael J. Mullen Reflection by Battalion Chief Douglas Praskovich. Retired Deputy Fire Chief Mike Mullen touched the lives of many people. His uncompromising dedication to his sworn duty to provide for the safety of the citizens of Pittsburgh was truly exceptional and one that should be emulated by every firefighter. He loves sharing his knowledge of firefighting in all its many aspects to make our firefighters safer, smarter, and more efficient on the fire ground. Mike knew most of the firefighters on the entire Pittsburgh Bureau of Fire by their first names and was always approachable regardless of rank. If he had a question, he would stop what he was doing to answer it. He worked tirelessly but also energetically his entire career in pursuit of more knowledge. His...
Thank you. And our next speaker is Puma Chokmum Yahali He.
Grant writings, everyone, in la ek alaka in, in the words of my ancestors, the light in me honors the light in you. Thank you very much, Teresa, for pronouncing my title in the best that you could. I do appreciate your attempts every time. I would like to just speak very briefly on the treaty with the Delawares, just to remind us what our relationship is with each other as the indigenous, the aborigine of the Americas and City Council and all citizens here on our lands, that this treaty was very specific in Article 1. It states that all offenses or acts of hostilities by one or either of the contracting parties against the other be mutually forgiven and buried in the depth of oblivion, nevermore to be had in remembrance. And just to summarize this, it's saying that our people, the aborigines, made this treaty with your ancestors. And the treaty stated that we would forgive the past transgressions to move on mutually together as one, people moving forward in unity and peace and in honor. And that is the role of City Council and County Council and all states and all municipal organizations, governments, and citizens, is to work with our people, with our people as we see our cosmo vision for our future and our children. And our cosmo vision is very, very open and inclusive. It is not exclusive. We seek to see our lands the way they were before colonization in the best way possible, and it's not possible to return it to those days of grandeur. It is possible to make some remedy. And when we say remedy as it relates to agriculture and food forestry, this is our vision. I grew up in these areas of the eastern side of what you call Pittsburgh. And I remember walking up our streets and in our alleys, and there were fruit trees, abundant fruit trees everywhere. And we'll table the discussion of how our trees got destroyed in recent times. This is in the early 1900s, this began to happen, right? Or I'll say the late 1900s, because the midway, they were still trees everywhere. Well, I will say, we have great vision and insight in working with various organizations in the city that deal with agriculture. We see better ways that will not just provide food for the people, abundant food for hundreds of years to come when done correctly. And our vision, we know how to do this because we've always done this. We taught everyone to grow food when they came here, whether they came as some would refer to them as slaves. I don't want to call people slaves. I will say that maybe they were, you know, indentured servants and the likes. And I will say, we taught them...
Thank you. And our next speaker is, registered speaker is Ikahana Helen McKenna. She on? Oh, she's not on? Okay, we'll check. Okay, seeing no further registered speakers, we'll now move on to comments from those in chambers. Is there anyone in chambers wishing to address City Council?
Yes, I, uh...
Good morning. Please approach the podium and state your name and neighborhood for the record.
My name's Devin McLean, I signed the list. Didn't sign up on online. Devin McLean, Hill District, uh, the junkies have overrun this town. It started with the crackheads in the 90s, and you ignored it mainly because they were our mothers and our aunts and our sisters. And now, I can't get off the bus without stepping over vomiting some junkie. And now you want how much money to clean this stuff up? Me and my boys can do that with a couple of good shalalas, trust me. $150,000 for cases against Algonquin Court of Common Pleas. Remember, I still ask about the three grand for when my subsidized house burned up, my subsidized apartment burned up, and Council Daniel Lavelle, proposal $150,000 and another three grand for this lady who the fire department destroyed their house. I asked for less than this amount when my apartment burned up, but yet and still Councilman Lavelle still hasn't responded. So I'm wondering what's going on with that. I'm still hoping you didn't write the check to that police officer who got promoted and you wanted the taxpayer to pay for his uniform augmentations. If you want to be like soldiers so much, remember, soldiers pay for their own uniform augmentations. I still haven't found out about whether the Pittsburgh police get a uniform allowance in their salary, but don't let me find that out and then find out I gotta write him a check for doing his uniform. What's next here? Um, oh, the thing out in Homewood with the dude wanting to build the robotic parts. Let him have it. You're not doing nothing else with it, because I swear, if I see a vegan food shop or another nonprofit Jesus Center, the partnership with the downtown partnership, the resources or is that the contractor making to clean up the junkies? Because I swear I seen one of them ambassadors downtown, and all they can do is tell you where the shelter's at and make sure you're not ODing. Like, where's with, like, like, you give the people nothing burgers to work with, you know? Listen, and, you know, the police, we gotta do something about these cops, man, just dragging black men to jail over the whims of a crack-smoking person. It's gotta stop. Like, the people here who work here don't have no right to...
Thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to address City Council? Good morning, Ms. Brown.
Good morning. My name is Yvonne F. Brown. I live in the Hill District up in Katy, where I was tires. Today, I wanted to do a show and tell. I believe when you hear it, you forget it, but you see it, you remember it, remember it, and when you know, you know. I wanted to explain that. Last election time, at Katy, where I was tires, as I was walking down to the basement and came past the Whit Watson, Watson, I might even be pronouncing his name right, but he's our council, county council person. Okay, so when I saw him, I said to him, "Hey, sir, I came down, I brought you all those petitions for a bus, and you told me that your friend, Salwood Dean's sister, his best friend, is in the building, and she will..." I asked for them to come up to the building, have a meeting. He says, "That's my best friend, she will." And I said, "Sir, but Eunice," and that's when he said, "I ain't got nothing to do with it." Well, we don't have a bus, he never asked for it, he never had the meeting, and I knew it when I said, when he said, "Eunice," I had said, "Sir." And he knew it, that's why he screamed at me. "I ain't got nothing to do with that." Okay, so when I told him, I said, "I'm coming back to county council, and I'm gonna tell them what you did." Okay, so now he was, he's very loud, he started getting loud. I said, "You're getting loud." And he said, "I don't know, I will call." Okay, that's the same day, I walked past, and there's a white woman outside the door, and that's John DeFazio, the county council president's wife, and she was saying, "Vote for my husband." And I said to her, I said, "You need to tell, woman to woman, you need to tell your husband, he's too rough and too gruff and very nasty." She said, "No, not my John." I said, "Oh, yes." She was very excited. She took, she said, "Come." And we went in and she sat down. She's facing this way, I'm that way, John's in the middle. Well, he has a crutch, because he's getting ready to get an operation. Okay, so when we're like this, and we feel somebody, and that's Watson, when we looked up, he's screaming at me, "I don't appreciate you telling the president to come for me." And they were scared, and we were, they were shaking, and they said, "No, no, she's not talking about you, John. No, no, she's not talking about you." I want you just to understand that you, when I come down here, I am disrespected. John DeFazio, they knew he was a gruff, rough man, running the council like he was, you know, he was a wrestler, that's the way he ran the council. And I told him, he remembered, because I said, "Fisher was giving money to a baccalaureate program, and I wanted Fisher to give some money to August Wilson's program, studio, because they were having problem." I want you just to understand how you disrespect me, and I come down, keep coming down, because I am still your boss. Whether you realize, now you are taking money from me to run to get your pay. I'm sorry, I didn't even get to tell you all the other stuff.
Thank you, Ms. Brown.
But next week, tomorrow, we'll need to see.
Thank you, Ms. Brown. Are there any further speakers wishing to address City Council? Are there any further speakers wishing to address City Council? Seeing no further speakers, we'll now move on to our next order of business, which is the presentation of papers. And we'll begin with Councilman Reverend Ricky Burgess, Chair of Human Resources. Councilman Coghill for Councilman Burgess, please.
Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you.
or Agreements with King 360, Inc. to Provide Technical Support and Development to the Commission on Human Relations for Its Customer Service Portal for One Year and an Amount Not to Exceed $26,700. And Bill 1393, Orders Amending the Pittsburgh Code Title IX, Zoning, Article 1, Section 902.03, zoning map by changing from R1DL Residential Single Unit Detached Low Density District to UI Urban Industrial District Certain Property Roughly Bounded by Kelly Street, 5th Avenue, Frankstown Avenue, and the Allegheny Valley Railroad Brilliant Line, all in the Allegheny County Block and Light System 12th Ward.
Thank you. And Councilman Coghill, Chair of Public Safety and Wellness.
Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Councilman.
Councilman Coghill presents Bill Number 1394, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the Director of the Department of Public Safety to Enter Into an Agreement or Agreements with the State Office of the Fire Commissioner for the Purpose of Receiving and Spending Grant Funds in the Amount of $15,000 to Support the Purchase of Emergency Rescue Equipment. And Bill Number 1395, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the Director of the Department of Public Safety to Enter Into an Agreement or Agreements with the Pittsburgh Downtown Partnership to Provide an Ambassador Program to Assist Police with Non-Criminal Matters in the Central Business District at an Overall Cost Not to Exceed $600,000.
And Councilwoman Gross, Chair of Intergovernmental and Educational Affairs.
No new papers, Madam President.
Thank you, Councilwoman. And Councilman Kraus, Chair of Public Works and Infrastructure.
Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Councilman.
Councilman Kraus presents Bill Number 1396.
Councilman Kraus presents Bill Number 1396, Ordinance Amending and Supplementing the City Code Title VI Conduct, Article I, Regulated Rights and Actions, by Adding a New Chapter 610, Entitled, Prohibition on Use of Certain Bags and Checkout Bag Charge to Prevent the Use of Only Certain Bags by Retail Establishments at the Point of Sale or for a Delivery and Establishing a Charge Payable by the Customer to the Establishment for the Provision of Other Types of Bags, All Under Certain Terms and Conditions. And Bill Number 1397, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the Directors of the Department of Public Works and the Department of Finance, on behalf of the city, to amend and renew the lease agreement with Beaver Avenue Associates, LLC, to continue providing at least space at 1301 Beaver Avenue for the Purposes of Housing the Facilities Maintenance Division of the Department of Public Works for the Total Cost Not to Exceed Seven Hundred Sixteen Thousand Four Hundred One Dollars and Forty-Two Cent over a Five-Year Period with Utilities Costs Included and an Option to Terminate Without Penalty between Three- through Five-Year Periods if Necessary.
Madam President, there appears to be a request by the administration to waive the rules on 1397 so that it can appear on tomorrow's standing committee agenda.
Do you have that, Madam? Okay, that's on our here.
Yeah. So, motion to waive the rules of 1397 with brief discussion, please.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Uh, Madam President, ma'am?
Yeah, we'll vote after you speak. Go ahead.
Thank you. So, we're, we're talking about renewing a lease agreement at a cost of about seven hundred and twenty thousand dollars, give or take. Um, I think it might be nice to, to, I don't, I don't want to delay it, but I would think that this might call for a quick briefing of council to understand why we're taking this action. Wait, so could we, could, Madam Clerk, we ask for a very quick briefing by the administration after, either before or after tomorrow's standing committee meeting, just to have a better understanding of what we're being asked to do here?
Yes.
And what's our, Councilwoman Strasburger? Do you have something? Okay, you'll wait till tomorrow? Okay, thank you. Okay.
Yeah, you know what? I'm sorry, Madam President. So, how about this? You know, I mean, being that it will be on the agenda tomorrow for discussion, um, how about, I'll hold off on requesting a briefing until after we hear at tomorrow's standing committee meeting, but if there's, there appears to be a need for further discussion, I'll ask for it then. How's that?
That sounds great.
Thanks, Madam President. Appreciate your help.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilwoman Strasburger.
Thank you, Madam President. Councilman Kraus, I know this is highly unusual for me to request to you to make the motion, but if you wouldn't mind making a motion to waive the rules of council for 1396, um, that would be much appreciated. It was supposed to come over as a
Oh!
request from the mayor's office and did not, so I wanted to make sure to flag that.
Yeah, you know, and Councilwoman, I'm gonna call you right after the meeting to see what your thoughts were. So, no, I'm happy to do that.
Thank you so much.
And so, yes, Madam President, may we also have a waiver of the rules of 1396 so that that may also appear on tomorrow's standing committee agenda?
Yes. So, we have a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, can we vote on both bills, Madam Clerk?
Yeah.
We vote on both? Did he waive the rules for two bills?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, so can we vote on both? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The bills will appear on tomorrow's standing committee's agenda.
Thanks, Madam President.
Thank you, Councilman. Thank you, Councilwoman. And council, that moves us on to Councilman Lavelle, Chair of Finance and Law. Councilwoman Strasburger for Councilman Lavelle. Thank you, Councilman.
Councilman Lavelle presents Bill Number 1385, Resolution Ratifying the 2023-2025 Fraternal Order of Police Lodge Number One, Collective Bargaining Agreement. Bill 1390, Resolution Authorizing the Issuance of Two Warrants Totalling One Hundred Fifty Thousand Dollars in Settlement of a Case Filed in the Allegheny County Court of Common Pleas. And Bill Number 1391, Resolution Authorizing the Issuance of a Warrant in Favor of Kathleen Spearman in the Amount of Three Thousand Two Hundred Twenty-Two Dollars in Settlement of a Claim for Damage to Her Residence Entry and Storm Doors from City Fire Personnel on November 5th, 2021.
And I just, um, want to add that this, uh, bill that you just entered, we just talked about for the FOP contract, we have an executive session today to discuss the details of that, of that contract. Um, so for personnel issues, I just want to make sure that, do we call for the, oh, it's a continuance of a, an executive session. So, just want to make sure members know that and that the public knows that. Wait, I'm sorry, what? Okay, can we also, Councilwoman Strasburger, can you make a, oh, I'm sorry, is this your bill? Um, Councilwoman Strasburger, can you make a waiver for Rule Eight for Bill 1385 for the collective bargaining?
Motion to waive the rules of council for Bill 1385 so that the bill appears on tomorrow's standing committee agenda.
We have a motion?
I'll second, Madam President.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The bill will appear on tomorrow's standing committee's agenda. We'll have a, an executive session today to get the details so you know what you're voting on, uh, before we vote. And I want to thank members for being so readily, um, available and, 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 and very helpful. Same with our budget office, our clerk and our city council solicitor, uh, for all the work that they're doing to make sure that we move all these things quickly.
Sorry, Madam, Madam President.
Um...
What, what time is this? Because I have one at 1:30.
We have one at 1:30. It's gonna follow immediately after.
Oh, okay.
And Councilwoman Strasburger, Chair of Recreation, Youth and Senior Services.
Uh, no new papers, Madam President.
Thank you, Councilwoman. And Councilwoman Warwick, Chair of Innovation, Performance, Asset Management and Technology.
Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
Councilwoman Warwick presents Bill Number 1398, Resolution Further Amending Resolution Number 864 of 2018, Effective January 1, 2019, as amended, entitled, Resolution Adopting and Approving the 2019 Capital Budget and the 2019 Community Development Block Grant Program and the 2019 through 2024 Capital Improvement Program by Reducing Mon Oakland Connector Four Mile Run by Twenty-One Thousand Dollars and Increasing Four Mile Run Playground by Twenty-One Thousand Dollars.
Thank you. One moment, please. I need this. Thank you. Okay. And Councilman Wilson, Chair of Land Use and Economic Development. Councilwoman Warwick for Councilman Wilson, please.
No new papers.
No new papers. Thank you, Councilwoman. And myself, Chair of Hearings, I have one resolution. Thank you.
Council President Teresa Kelsmith presents Bill Number 1399, Resolution to Approve the Reporting Forms for Stop the Violence and Group Violence Intervention, GVI, pursuant to Chapter 237.
Thank you. And now we'll move on to...
Madam President?
Oh, yes. Can I have a motion to waive Rule Eight, please, on that?
So, move.
Happy to do that, Madam President.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. And, what do you have? Okay. Sorry. And that moves us on to our reports of committee for final action. Let me find the page. And we begin with Councilman Lavelle, Committee on Finance and Law. Thank you, Councilwoman Strasburger. Aw. That was so nice of you. That was nice of you.
Councilman Lavelle presents Bill Number 1386, Reported a Committee on Finance and Law for March 29, 2023, with an Affirmative Recommendation. Bill 1108, Ordinance Amending Title II, Article V, Chapter 237, Stop the Violence Fund, Section 237.03, Uses and Restrictions of the Stop the Violence Fund, directing the mayor's designated, their under, the Office of Management and Budget and the Director of the Department of Public Safety to utilize a reporting form approved by city council to ensure proper and legal use of said funds by grantees their under in accordance with Ordinance 237, Stop the Violence Fund of the City of Pittsburgh. Bill 1334, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the City Solicitor to Enter into a Professional Services Agreement or Agreements with Riser Consulting, LLC, in an Amount Not to Exceed Twenty Thousand Dollars for Professional Services related to litigation in the United States District Court for the Western District of Pennsylvania. Bill 1335, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the Director of the Office of Management and Budget to Enter into an Agreement or Agreements with the Pennsylvania Department of Environmental Protection for the Purpose of Receiving and Spending Grant Funds in the Amount of Thirty-Six Thousand Twenty-Seventh Dollars and Fifty Cent to Reimburse the City for the Installation of Ten Dual-Hosed Electric Charging Stations. Bill 1336, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the Director of the Department of Office of Management and Budget to Enter into an Agreement or Agreements with the Pennsylvania Department of Environmental Protection for the Purpose of Receiving and Spending Grant Funds in the Amount of Two Hundred Fifty Three Thousand One Hundred Twenty-Five Dollars to Reimburse the City for the Purchase of Forty-Five All-Electric Vehicles. Bill Number 1337, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the Director of the Office of Management and Budget to Enter into an Agreement or Agreements with the Pennsylvania Department of Environmental Protection for the Purpose of Receiving and Spending Grant Funds in the Amount of One Million Three Hundred Forty-Five Thousand Dollars to Purchase Three Electric Recycling Packers and Five Compressed Natural Gas Garbage Trucks. And Bill 1341, Resolution Further Amending Resolution Number 647 of 2020, Effective December 23, 2020, as amended, entitled, Resolution Adopting and Approving the 2021 Capital Budget and the 2021 Community Development Block Grant Program and the 2021 through 2026 Capital Improvement Program by Reducing Trail Development by Five Hundred Thousand Dollars and Increasing Facility Improvements, Sports Facilities, by Two Hundred Thousand Dollars and Complete Streets by Three Hundred Thousand Dollars.
Thank you. And we have two amendments to be offered up. Councilwoman Strasburger, do you mind making those? One for Councilman Wilson's bill and one for mine for the Stop the Violence Committee on Finance and Law.
I would like to make a motion to amend Bill 1341, uh, make a technical amendment.
Okay, can we have a, we have a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Bills amended. Thank you, Councilwoman. And the other bill is amended by substitution.
Motion to amend Bill 1108 by, by substitution.
Thank you. And that's on behalf of me. Thank you.
Second.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. And now we'll vote on the bills as amended. And, Madam Clerk?
Uh, Mr. Coghill?
Aye.
Ms. Gross? Mr. Kraus?
Aye.
Mrs. Strasburger?
Aye.
Ms. Warwick?
Aye.
Mrs. Kelsmith, President?
Aye.
Five ayes, zero noes.
Thank you. The bills haven't received the legally required number of votes are finally passed. And, and I am gonna add something I should have added before, and I just want to say, with the Stop the Violence stuff, we are going to work, we've worked with the administration a little bit on this, we worked with Ricky Moody, worked with our solicitor, Lori May Office, our budget office, and council members, of course, trying to make sure that we're getting some answers for the public, but yet with making sure that we're allowing the public to do the job that, that we ask them to do every, every week and every day. So, with that said, I think we'll look going forward, the next round of funding, we'll make sure that we work with the administration in advance of those grants so that we all have something that we can agree on. Thanks. So, thank you, members. And now we'll move on to Councilman Kraus.
Thank you, Madam President.
Committee on Public Works and Infrastructure. Thank you, Councilman.
Thank you, Madam President.
I don't know how he keeps track of them. I'm confused to say anything.
Councilman Kraus presents Bill Number 1387, Reported a Committee on Public Works and Infrastructure for March 29, 2023, with an Affirmative Recommendation. Bill 1330, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the Director of the Department of Public Works to Enter into an Agreement or Agreements with the State Office of the Fire Commissioner for the Purpose of Receiving and Spending Grand Funds in the Amount of Ten Thousand Dollars to Support Repairs to Medic 10. And Bill 1331, Resolution Providing for a Reimbursement Agreement or Agreements with the Pennsylvania Department of Transportation for Costs Associated with the Final Design and Construction Phases of the Frankstown Avenue Signal Improvement Project and Providing for the Payment of the Costs Thereof Not to Exceed Four Million One Hundred Fifty Three Thousand Three Hundred Forty Nine Dollars, reimbursable at Eighty Percent and the Municipal Share of Commonwealth Incurr Costs Not to Exceed Thirteen Thousand Dollars.
Thank you. You've heard the reading and the title of the bills. Is there any discussion on the bills? Seeing none, the bills are not ready for final action. All in favor, the passage, vote a when their name is called. Those opposed will vote no. Will the clerk please call the rule?
Mr. Coghill?
Aye.
Ms. Gross?
Aye.
Mr. Kraus?
Aye.
Mrs. Strasburger?
Aye.
Ms. Warwick?
Aye.
Mrs. Kelsmith, President?
Aye.
Six ayes, zero noes.
Thank you. If the bills haven't received the legally required number of votes are finally passed. And that moves us on to Councilman Bobby Wilson, Committee on Land Use and Economic Development. Councilwoman Warwick, thank you for doing that, for Councilman Wilson.
Councilman Wilson presents Bill Number 1388, Reported a Committee on Land Use and Economic Development for March 29, 2023, with an Affirmative Recommendation. Bill 1338, Ordinance Clarifying a Street Name Discrepancy of Alquipa Street Between Sutherland Drive and Utterback Drive as Located in the Fourth and Fifth Wards of the City of Pittsburgh as Per Recommendation by the City of Pittsburgh Addressing Committee. The following street name was clarified by CPAC in January 2023. The name listed in this ordinance shall be made official in accordance with the Pittsburgh Code Title IV, Public Places and Properties, Chapter 420, Uniform Street Naming and Addressing. Bill 1339, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the Directors of the Department of City Planning and the Department of Finance, on behalf of the City of Pittsburgh, to Enter into a License Agreement or Agreements with Duquesne Light Company, Inc., and Pittsburgh Parking Authority for the Installation and Maintenance of Electric Vehicle Charging Stations at 6117 Kirkwood Street. And Bill Number 1340, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the Directors of the Department of City Planning and the Department of Finance, on behalf of the City of Pittsburgh, to Enter into a License Agreement or Agreements with Duquesne Light Company, Inc., and Phipps Conservatory and Botanical Gardens for the Installation and Maintenance of Electric Vehicle Charging Stations at 1 Schindly Drive.
Thank you. You've heard the reading and the title of the bills. Is there any discussion on the bills? Seeing none, the bills are not ready for final action. All in favor, the passage, vote a when their name is called. Those opposed will vote no. Will the clerk please call the rule?
Mr. Coghill?
Aye.
Ms. Gross?
Aye.
Mr. Kraus?
Aye.
Mrs. Strasburger?
Aye.
Ms. Warwick?
Aye.
Mrs. Kelsmith, President?
Aye.
Six ayes, zero noes.
Thank you. The bills haven't received the legally required number of votes are finally passed. And that moves us on to Councilwoman Deborah Gross, Deborah L. Gross, Committee on Intergovernmental and Educational Affairs. I just noticed that after all these, all these years.
Councilwoman Gross presents Bill Number 1389, Reported a Committee on Intergovernmental and Educational Affairs for March 29, 2023, with an Affirmative Recommendation. Bill 1327, Resolution Adopting the Plan Revision to the City of Pittsburgh's Official Sewage Facilities Plan for the Arena and Sports Performance Complex Project, which will involve the development of a new six-story arena and associated three-story sports performance complex. The site address is 3719 Terrace Street in the Fourth Ward. Bill Number 1328, Resolution Amending Resolution Number 806 of 2018, entitled, Resolution Authorizing a Cooperation Agreement or Agreements with the URA of Pittsburgh in Connection with the URA's Application for a Redevelopment Assistance Capital Program Grant of Up to One Million Dollars for the Stevens Elementary School Redevelopment Project to Increase the Grant Amount to Up to One Million Five Hundred Thousand in Authorized Spending. Bill 1329, Resolution Providing for the Issuance of a Warrant in Favor of the Pennsylvania Municipal League in the Amount of Fifty Two Thousand Nine Hundred Sixty Two Dollars and Twenty Four Cent for 2023 Pennsylvania Municipal League Dues. And Bill Number 1333, Resolution Providing for a Reimbursement Agreement or Agreements with the Southwestern Pennsylvania Commission to Recoup Yearly Costs Associated with the City's Participation and Attendance and the Member Planning Agency Participation Services.
Thank you. You've heard the reading and the title of the bills. Is there any discussion on the bills? I, I'm just gonna say I want to thank Mayor Gagne and his administration for adding the funding to the Stevens School Building as promised. Um, they had said that they would, they were moving funding and that if I would support that, they would, they promised that they would, uh, bring the funding back over. And I want to just thank them for that. Um, because this is a project that's really important to the LA community. There's been two projects... There's been two projects that have been really important to Elliott. One was the renovation of Townsend Park, which was about a million dollars, we did a couple of years ago, and the Stevens School Building, which is really, also really important to the community. So, I want to thank them for making sure that this project is moving forward And It Will Be A Community Center For, For The Area. So, thank you. And we have none. We have no, no city-owned, um, city-operated facilities. We have city-owned facilities, but we have no city-run or operated facilities, uh, recreation centers or community centers in our district. So, this will be the first. So, thank you. And with that said, is there, the bills are not ready for final action. All in favor, the passage, vote aye when their name is called. Those opposed will vote no. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Mr. Coghill?
Aye.
Ms. Gross?
Aye.
Mr. Kraus?
Aye.
Mrs. Strasburger?
Aye.
Ms. Warwick?
Aye.
Mrs. Kelsmith, President?
Aye.
Six ayes, zero noes.
Thank you. The bills haven't received the legally required number of votes are finally passed. That moves us on to motions and resolutions. And so, I'm gonna need a me, a motion to recess this meeting, but I, before we, I'll say a few things. Uh, due to timing, compliance issues relating to Act 111, council finds and declares final action will be required tomorrow When We Reconvene After Recessing This Meeting. May I have a motion for an early action on Bill 1385?
Submoved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. And before we recess this meeting, I have a few more meeting announcements, and I'll turn it over to members before we do. Um, this afternoon at 1:30, council will hold an executive session On The Legal Opinion From The Law Department As It Relates To The Million, To The $1 Million Budget For Grants For The 2023 Council As A Body Operating Budget. And We Requested That Opinion. So, thank you, um, to our solicitor. Council Standing Committee's meeting is scheduled for 10:00 a.m. tomorrow, Wednesday, April 5. To register to speak at this meeting, please fill out the sign-up form on the council's meeting webpage Or Call The Clerk's Office At 412-255-2138. Speaker Registration Will Close At 9:00 a.m. Tomorrow Morning. Also, Good Friday Will Be Observed This Friday, April 7. Council And Clerk Offices Will Be Closed. And I know that there's tomorrow at sundown is also Passover, So Happy Passover To Those Who Celebrate Passover, Happy Easter To Those Who Celebrate Easter, And Whatever I May Have Missed. So, with that said, um, is there anything from members?
Madam President?
Yes, Councilman Kraus.
Thank you, Madam President. Just a, a quick update. Um, I just wanted to thank members for their, their indulgence In My Connecting Digitally Here The Last Couple Months. Uh, I, I do my last physical therapy this coming Thursday. I've been cleared, I'm good, and I will return, um, in person, starting next Tuesday. And, uh, just again, wanted to, um, appreciate the indulgence of my colleagues and you, Madam President, And, uh, and, you know, helping me get through a difficult time Uh, and my attending a lot of these meetings via Zoom. But, uh, next week I will be back in person, and it will be wonderful to have this all behind me. So, thank you so much.
Thank you. And I want to say, I know you've had a very difficult time, And I want to thank you for even struggling through all the meetings while you were in pain. And, um, I, I know you're gonna be working on some amazing things when you retire, So, I'll let people know that you're gonna be starting your own bakery, so we're ready for that one. But, anyway, but I do want to say.
You can't say that, no.
But I do want to thank you for, for struggling through everything and, and helping us with everything. So, thank you very much, Councilman. I, I'm impressed at how well you do on these meetings. I have a difficult time with sheets right in front of me, so I'm impressed at what you're doing. So, thank you. Anything else from members? With that said, may I have a?
Madam President?
Who's that? Councilman Wilson?
Yeah, I wanted to join and register aye votes for all prior and remaining bills. Was, is this the end of the meeting?
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, so all prior bills then.
Thank you, Councilman, for logging on. I know you had some stuff going on today. Madam Clerk?
Thank you.
Please register ayes. Thank you, Madam Clerk. And now maybe we have a motion to recess this meeting until tomorrow after the standing committee's meeting. A second?
Submoved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting is recessed. Thank you.